Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome you to the Tuesday, January 9th, 2024 regular meeting of this Hayden City Council. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It is 5:04 PM. Councilmember De Priest, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know many of you are sitting there saying, "What's he still doing up there? Didn't we have an election?" Well, bear with us, folks. It'll happen soon enough. First of all, do we have any from council, any additions or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, we will move right into the consent calendar. Ladies and gentlemen, the city of Hayden does business five days a week, nine hours a day.
Let's take attendance real quick.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call vote, please. Shaun Langendorfer is our deputy city clerk sitting in for Abby Sanchez.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Council President Roter?
Yes.
Okay, we have a quorum.
City of Hayden does business all the time. Many of the actions that the city staff undertakes do not require any input from city council whatsoever. However, some of the things that city staff does do require the approval or the consent of city council. If you -- I hope that all of you have taken a look at the agenda there with the calendar. We have a number of items on the consent calendar. Council has all been provided this information. It's also been available to citizens on the Internet coming up to this meeting. Tonight, for the consent calendar, we have Item 1A, the approval of December 12th, 2023 city council meeting minutes; 1B, the approval of PZE 23-0110, Pace Zone Map Amendment Written Decision for a Zone Map Amendment from Residential Suburban to Single Family Residential; 1C, confirmation of mayoral appointments of individuals to the Public Safety Commission; 1D, confirmation of mayoral appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission; 1E, acceptance of Lake City Lighthouse LLC grant of easement; 1F, the approval of 2024 Contractual Services Agreement with Flanagan Ventures DBA Wiley E. Waters; 1G, the approval of the 2024 Contractual Services Agreement with K. Tiger's Taekwondo; 1H, the approval of a request to increase the part-time account technician hours; 1I, the approval of contract services with Depth Security for an external penetration test. That's an Internet safety test. 1J, the approval of Hayden Area Regional Sewer Board Wastewater Treatment Plant Facility Upgrades Payment Request; 1K, the ratification of the December 2023 payroll; 1L, the ratification of bills paid on 12/27/23; and 14/24; and 1M, the approval of bills for payment. Council, do you have any comments or questions regarding our consent calendar? Hearing none, I would be happy to accept a motion regarding the disposition of our consent calendar.
I'll make the motion that we approve the consent calendar as stated, 1A through 1M.
Second. Thank you. I now have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please. Shaun?
Councilmember De Priest?
Yep.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Council President Roter?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number two, visitor and public comment, non-agenda items. Ladies and gentlemen, if anyone would care to make a public comment, if you would please fill out a page like this that's sitting on the back table and bring it forward here, we'll be happy to take care of it. For those of you who are -- who would like to have public comment tonight, first, if you wish to speak, please fill out a card from the table at the back. Second, public comments are limited for five minutes. At approximately the four-minute mark, I'll wave a paper like this to let you know you have one minute remaining. We expect commenters to be respectful of other citizens and council members. Council will not hear any comments on planning and zoning matters that's before the city or is known to be a likely application. When it's your turn to speak, please approach the podium, state your name, and whether you reside within the Hayden City limits. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a meeting of the city council. While it takes place in public, it is not a meeting with the public. It is a meeting of the city council to do city business. Public comment is only allowed regarding topics not on tonight's agenda or upcoming quasi-judicial matters. Please keep in mind that the council will generally not respond to public comments. The mayor and council are available by phone, email, or by visiting City Hall anytime. Our first commenter is Mr. Doug Fredericks.
I reside within the city of Hayden on Bateman Street. I visualize the new people up here, so I assume you're somewhere in the back here. My comments were really intended as much for them as the current sitting city council. I just wanted, as a citizen, to kind of reiterate what I've said to previous councils. Just give some context. I've lived here since 1997, retired from the Air Force at Fairchild Air Force Base, so I've seen a lot of change here. And I come from a background of very rural village-type atmosphere in New England, so Hayden's a lot different than that. It's still that way where I'm from. So that's the context of kind of where I've been. I'm going to address growth. There should be no surprise to most people. Another context, the Prairie Shopping Center wasn't built when we moved here, so that's kind of one of the benchmarks. And I remember a lot of -- I lived down off of Dakota and Miles on a street called Bayton right before Stranghorne. And I remember a lot of little ranch houses with three, five acres of land and horses grazing, and of course, that's all gone now. And we know what's going on with growth, so I don't need to regenerate it. But what I want to say particular again, reemphasize to this council and for the new people coming in, I would like to see the council really consciously work at representing the current citizens of the city of Hayden and not become a housing authority for people that want to move here. You know, a lot of people have stated that they like the single-family residence atmosphere here versus apartment buildings and the like. I understand growth has to take place. We have to have a certain influx of new people to keep up with wage -- lower-wage jobs and service and that sort of thing, and I understand that. I just really, as you make decisions regarding growth, keep the quality of life of the current residents at the forefront, not just in mind, but at the forefront, and kind of put a weight value to your decision based on -- excuse me. I do support a possible look at the comp plan to be modified or changed. I know this costed a lot of money. I think that document is a core document that ties us to a lot of the growth that we're experiencing and we can't get away from. The KCMPO, the Cooney County Metropolitan Planning Organization, projects growth rates through, I think I said 2035, I can't remember, 2035 I believe, of 30,000, 35,000 for Hayden. And if that's a core document that we're planning towards, I don't know if it's even feasible, I don't know if it's legal in the state of Idaho, but why can't this council with a consort with the citizens decide what the populations look like instead of that document? That document says 30,000, and we say 21,000, 19,000, whatever. I'd like to see that become the principal, core document that we base our planning on. And so that's all I have to say. Hope the folks who heard this, and I just wanted to say my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fredericks. Are there any other citizens that would like to make a public comment tonight?
Okay. Hearing none?
Hey, we got a guy.
Yeah, but, all right, sir?
I live in Hayden. I wanted to speak about Item 5B, but I was told that I couldn't do so. We can't speak about agenda items for some reason. And if we're going to have open government, we've got to be able to talk about the issues at hand and not be told that we can't talk about said items. Okay? So that needs to change, okay? Item 5B, the approval of resolution adapting standards for outside boards like KMPO, but I'm told I can't talk about that, okay? Lisa Ailport, I think, did the administrator, wrote this document. Was she elected by us? Anybody here vote for her? Anybody know who she is? But she's telling the council how to vote, okay? That's not right. And, you know, I think you guys need to have a conversation about whether you want to retain her, just saying, okay? I believe in the Constitution. We need constitutional government, not this crap that's going on right now. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Coder, Mr. Coder, Ms. Ailport did not write that document. That document was written by the city of Post Falls, and it has been adopted by Post Falls and by Rathrum. I, I, I was the one that chose to have it on the agenda.
So why are you telling me I can't talk about it?
That's a fair point.
She does not tell us how to vote.
Moving on to item number three, unfinished business. First is Item 3A, the Pace Zone Map Amendment Ordinance from the Residential Suburban to Single Family Residential. Members of council, last meeting, the council agreed to change the zoning on the Pace property from residential to, pardon me, residential suburban to R1, and in our consent calendar tonight, we have the written decision that we approved. However, an ordinance is a two-step process, so we have the written decision, and now we need to deal with the, with actually amending the land use, pardon me, the zoning map for this particular piece of property. Donna, do you have anything in particular to add to that?
No, you did a great job.
Okay, all right. Last day, finally did something right. I almost hear you say that. Okay. Council members, do you have any comments or questions regarding the Pace Zone Map Amendment Ordinance?
I have a question. Remind me a little bit about the details of this one, because we've gone through quite a few of.
Yes, sure, Mr. Roter. In the, on the Pace Zone Map, there is a house fronting the street, and then the Paces asked if they could build a house behind their property to, for their, for their front service's daughter.
Okay.
You will access the property next.
That's all I need. Thanks.
Any, any other questions?
No, I'm just getting old. I need to be reminded.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Members of council, all ordinances must be read on three different dates unless the council opts to adopt an ordinance by suspending the rules. There are the steps required to adopt the suspended rules are as follows. First of all, I would appreciate a motion from council to read the ordinance by title only, to suspend the rule of reading in full on three separate dates, and to approve the first reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion regarding that? Hearing none, roll call vote, please. Shaun?
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
Council President Roter?
Yes.
Okay. Here is the title of the ordinance. The Pace Zone Map Amendment, PZE 23-11010, an ordinance of the city of Hayden, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing for a change in zoning classification for the lands described in Section 1 of this ordinance, from residential suburban to single-family residential, providing for the amendment of the official zoning map to reflect these changes, providing that all prior zones applicable to the lands described in Section 1 are hereby superseded, providing severability, and providing an effective date. Now, that's quite a title. I would now appreciate a motion from council that the ordinance be adopted on having its, on having its, having passed its first reading by title only, and that it be published by summary incorporating the title as the core of the summary upon passage.
So move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please. Shaun?
Council President Roter?
Yes.
Council, um, Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
All right, moving on to Item 3B, the acceptance of the Idaho Heritage Trust Grant to rehabilitate wildlife damage to the Stoddard Barn. Donna, would you like to give us a little bit of background on that? You were the one that made the application to the state for that. I read that. That was an excellent application. Good job.
I had some help, so it wasn't just a one-man show. We met last spring. We identified last spring that we wanted to, as a City Park and Rec Commission, a preservation commission, and the city council met and were talking about the Stoddard Barn, and we wanted to be able to evaluate its usefulness in the city. And as part of that discussion, it was identified that we really needed to take a look at what it would take to remove the pigeon infestation that occurs in the loft of that barn and/or maybe some bats that are in there because it's available for them to get into. And so we identified the Idaho Heritage Trust, and they came out and did a couple of evaluations of the barn and recognized that as a barn structure goes, it's really, in really good, good shape, considering other barns that they looked at, and were very helpful in pointing us in the right direction. And then we reached out to a couple of folks to evaluate the silo as well as the internal of the loft area of the original barn versus the addition. And so we're looking at trying to enclose and clean out, move the, move the animals out of the loft, and clean that area with the grant money that we received and what we have budgeted in the city council budget, I mean, in the city adopted budget. And so we applied for the grant, and we received the maximum amount of the grant that they would be able to give anybody in the state is $15,000. They gave us $10,000, even though this is a, considered to be really a maintenance kind of behavior. They recognize the importance of getting the barn secure and clean so that we can then figure out how we actually want to utilize the barn to the best of the city.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions of Donna regarding this, this grant that we are being offered at this point? Ms. White?
I have some questions. Generally, I'm cautious when we accept grants because sometimes they come with strings attached. Could you please tell me what, and let the people know, what are the requirements to the city, and are there any strings attached to this grant?
Well, if you don't mind, I'll answer that for, for the city. Staff has reviewed the grant application and in discussions with the granting authority that, with Idaho Heritage Trust, we have found that the, really the only string is at this point that it's a reinvestment, or a reimbursement grant, so we have to upfront that money. There was some suggestions about needing a possible easement, but we've absolved the need for that as part of this grant application. With that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions that council may have with respect to the particulars of the grant application or the grant agreement.
Okay, so I just want to reiterate that the, we have budgeted $25,000, so we do have that money to put upfront in the budget.
So we will have to spend the 25,000, or 20,000, excuse me, a match of 100% in order to receive back that $10,000 commitment. So yes, we would have to spend at least 20,000, and we have 25 budgeted, so we are funded there.
Other questions? Mr. Roter?
Yeah, to kind of visualize for the future of what we're going to use that barn for, I think it would be important for people to know. I've heard things like maybe a place for wedding venues, a more public place that could be used. I mean, we're just not cleaning this up.
Correct.
Just to sit there. So there is a, there is a plan, and we have a committee that is working on a plan or has a plan. So if you, if you wanted to share a little bit about that?
Well, we, we've identified that, that we need to get the barn into a state that we have some time to be able to do an analysis to figure out how to best utilize the barn and the exterior barn structure. So you're correct. We've talked about wedding venues, we've talked, or vetting, uh, event center, we've talked about a vendor, like, yeah, but parking is kind of a quirky question there. So we've talked about a variety of different uses for the barn. It's important to note, it, you would all really appreciate, if you're history folks, you really appreciate the fact that the barn really never changed internally. If you walked into the barn, you can still see the dairy stanchions where the cows would be. You can still see the creamery room that was there. So from a historical standpoint, it's very complete, so, and the hay loft, when we originally got it, was actually still used as a hay loft. So it has some really good potential for the barn area.
I'd like to add that, you know, for the price of building a building, they already have existing, and we put a little bit of money in it, I think it's a good value. Thank you, Donna.
And a historic building at that?
Yes.
Other questions or comments from, from council? Hearing none, I would appreciate a motion from council regarding, or asking the mayor to authorize or not to sign the acceptance of the Idaho Heritage Trust Grant to rebuild the wildlife damage.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Roter?
Yeah, my motion is that the mayor sign this Idaho Heritage Trust Grant award so we can move forward with fixing a barn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please. Shaun?
Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Council President Roter?
Yes. Motion passes. Item four, oath of office. This is what most of you came here for, right? As I leave, the least I can say about my tenure as mayor is this has been a great experience. As mayor, I always thought that our staff was good, but after serving as city administrator and mayor for a couple of months until we could bring Ms. Ailsworth onboard, I was absolutely amazed at just how good they are. They deal with city problems all day, every day. They have an amazing handle on what goes on here. They are professionals, and I am very proud of all of our staff. I'd like to thank the staff for teaching me about city business and how to make it look, at least, like I knew what I was doing. Thank you. I'd like to thank the Parks and the Streets Division for doing their job before most of us even think about getting up in the morning, and they do it very well. Snow plowing, ladies and gentlemen, is a thankless job, and they're doing the best they can. I'd like to thank Fonda Jovic and Donna Phillips for teaching me about the incredibly complex land use laws that we work under and the state laws that we have to abide by, whether we like them or not. I too often hear statements from elected officials that start with, "Well, my constituents, my constituents." I'd like to remind our elected officials and our newly elected officials that none of them were elected with any more than 12% of our citizens. That means that 88% of our citizens did not vote for him or her. But as elected officials, we serve all 17,000 citizens in our city. Our actions must represent and look out for all of our citizens, not just the 12% that voted for us. I've heard people from all over the county who do not live in Hayden stand up in our public meetings here and tell us what to do and how to spend our taxpayer dollars. To them, I say, "Sit down." You may be able to drive our city streets, visit our city parks, and enjoy all of our other city amenities for free, but that does not give you the right to dictate to us how to spend our citizens' money. I've always said, ladies and gentlemen, that growth should pay for itself. In reality, I have come to find out that the way our system works is that growth has to come first before we get paid for it. It's a backwards situation, but that always has and always will be putting us behind the eight ball when we try to provide for adequate roads and infrastructure for our citizens. In fact, with no growth, there is no money to provide for these improvements without raising our taxes. To say it's been an honor to represent the city of Hayden seems almost like a cliche, but it's true. I've worked with great people on this council to slow our growth and to try to fix our transportation problems, but it's a long road. In fact, I didn't realize how long the road is until I moved from being a citizen to being a mayor. But we have good people in our government and coming into our government who are working hard to fix these challenges. Please support them in their effort as they learn their jobs and tackle our city's challenges. Thank you very much. I'd like to ask Alan Davis, Matt Roter, and Tom Schaefer to come to the front of the room.
I have some.
Should we move to the side?
No, you guys are fine. We'll just do it right in front here. If you would stand over there, please.
I'd first like to ask Alan Davis to step to the front here. Mr. Davis, do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Thank you very much. Hand up or no?
Hand up, please. Do you solemnly swear to, do you solemnly swear or affirm to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Idaho and faithfully discharge the duties of mayor of the city of Hayden according to the best of your abilities?
I will.
Thank you. You'd step back. Mr. Schaefer, Mr. Roter, if you would step forward, please.
And White.
Sure, of course. Come on up here. Both of you gentlemen together?
Oh, okay. Is that all right?
Raise your right hand, please. Matthew Roter and Tom Schaefer, do you solemnly swear or affirm to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Idaho and faithfully discharge the duties of council member for the city of Hayden according to the best of your abilities?
I will.
I will.
Thank you, gentlemen. Congratulations to our now council members. And again, council member, Mr. Davis. Ladies and gentlemen, I assume we're going to need to change some nameplates, and some people probably want to say congratulations. We will take a five-minute recess and come back and start the council meeting over again. come back and start the council meeting over again.
Next item is the election of a council president. Following oath of office of elected and re-elected officials. One of the first tasks of the council is to perform the election of one of the council members as council president. In the absence of mayor, the council president exercises the office of mayor by running city council meetings and signing city documents. Lisa, do you have anything to add?
No.
All right. Is there any discussion amongst the city council members?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, I would like to nominate Matt Roder.
Nominate, okay. So we have a motion to nominate Matt Roder. And a second. Maybe we have a roll call vote, please. Yes.
Councilmember Shaffer.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Council President Roder.
Can I vote?
Yes.
I don't know.
Well, sure.
If you don't vote for yourself, nobody else should.
All right, motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Roder.
Don't be absent.
Yes, sir.
I'm only kidding, you know that.
Yeah. Okay, moving on to the next new business item is the approval of resolution adopting standards for outside boards. And this resolution is presented to adopt language to explain how representatives of the city are to serve the city's interests on various regional boards within the county. Lisa, do you have more to add?
No, I just think in context, you might provide the process for how this came to a resolution in the form of a document produced by the city of Rathrum and the city of Post Falls.
Okay. So what we have here is an administrative document that provides guidance to city council when they are acting on behalf of the city outside of the city. For example, on a metropolitan board or a sewer board. City council asked originally to get some guidance and such was drafted using guidance already established in Post Falls and Rathrum. Is there any discussion by city council?
Mr. Mayor? One point of clarification on that, it's not just council, it's also staff.
Thank you.
I have just some questions. I'm looking at, let's see, it would be under the appointment and presentation by city council members, paragraph B. And to me, this is kind of the focus of this resolution. It says, "Council members appointed to represent the city in the place of the mayor will represent the policy in best interest of the city. When given personal positions will be identified and not represented as the city's position, regardless of personal opinion, the appointed city council member will vote consistent with city policy." And I started thinking about application of that because I sit on the Hayden Urban, Hayden Area Regional Sewer Board. We are, we have a stake, I don't know if you call it an ownership, there's three votes. I will cast one vote right now as being the voting member with the absence of Roger until we decide what we're going to do there. I don't, we're, we're, right now, I'm in a position where I have to rely like on Allen because we have such new people within the city to understand a very complex sewer treatment facility. And I'm, I'm wondering, does this mean that when I make a vote, that I need to really come back to city council to get what their thinking is? So I'm in line with the city council? Because there's some really important votes that we have to take. Now, we, so, so in my mind, I'm, you know, there's, there's not a personal vote in there, but I, you know, I, I have to make sure I know what the city, representing the city, because the implication financially that, that that board has on the city and our responsibility. So I'm tossing around in my mind, application of this policy. So now I'm going to contrast that to, I sit on the Hayden Urban Renewal Agency, and that is, I am sitting there as a citizen, not as a, representing the city. So does this apply to Hura? Because I'm a citizen? And, so in other words, I'm having, I understand where, why this was developed, but I'm having troubles understanding that I want to make sure I'm within the policy and what, will have to go through my brain to think about making decisions. So I'm just a little confused, I guess.
So I heard two questions. The answer to the first one is yes. The answer to the second one is no. And so for those that were lost on the questions, the purpose of the resolution is so that city council members provide guidance, votes, whatever the issue is, consistent with what city council wants. Yes, if it's a new item that hasn't been discussed with, among city council, the expectation is that the member comes back, we resolve it at city council, and then we move forward. And if it's already been addressed at city council, then you know the city's position and you vote or act accordingly. In the case of the latter example, where you're on a board but not acting as a city council person, this does not apply.
Okay, so in application, Harbs has very complex issues with DEQ, EPA requirements, licensing, complex systems that have to be maintained. And so, am I going to have to come back when we're, we're in a board meeting and we need to make a decision? And a lot of that isn't, until you get to the meeting and you hear the issue in more detail, am I going to have to bring those issues back to the full council and try to go through and explain these complex things, decide what the council wants to do? In other words, I mean, there's decisions we make on million dollars, like there was a $22 million regulatory upgrade, and when we're voting on invoices and that kind of stuff, I don't see where, that's not a personal thing, we have to do that. But, but, so that's what I'm struggling with. I, I just wanted clarity on helping me know where I have to be with this policy. Because I do want to maintain what I'm required to do as a member of the council.
That's all I can say. Yeah, and I, if you can clarify what he just said, that from what I, how I understand it and what I've seen happen, is a lot of what Council President Roder just described are the, the basic operational functions of, say, Harbs, invoices and things like that. Where this presented itself was right around the time where we had a somewhat contentious, maybe is a good word for it, controversial issue related with KMPO and the cameras. And I see it more as when something like that comes up, where you have community, I don't want to say discord, but you have a wide variety of community opinion. And I, I think that this is good for a situation where you have those, where you come back and the council talks about the issue, deliberates about the issue as we do any others, and then renders a, a decision. And then that representative goes back to that board. Because these, these are things that don't have, these aren't day-to-day meeting to meeting things, I don't think is what the intent is. Let's just, I'm going to keep using the KMPO issue. That, that went on for, I don't know, months. And there were several meetings. And I, I see it as related to that, so that one way or another, you know, I'm going to have a different opinion maybe than you do. Personal opinion, ideology, philosophy, what have you. But I'm going to go to that meeting, and if I don't have any guidance, I'm going to possibly vote for my ideology so that my group that talks to me a lot is happy. My decision may not make a lot of people happy, okay? And that's what, when I think it should come before the council, so that everybody gets an opportunity, because we represent all 17,000 to 18,000 people in the community, not just a little group here, a little group there, or my or your personal ideology. So I think it's some, I think it's important in those aspects, so that we address the potential of individuals voting their own personal, more so than something that represents. I saw, may as well go there. Social media, of course, was out with this stuff. And a, and a comment was made that this is made to muzzle council people. I think it's a good thing to give us all. It's just the opposite. You bring these issues in front of all of us and let us discuss them, that's not muzzling anybody. That's giving everybody here the opportunity, as I'm doing now, as Council President Roder, and as anybody else, will have the opportunity to express their feeling about it. That's not muzzling, that's giving us the opportunity to represent people out there, which is the way it should be. And that's why I, I like, I don't think it's for the day-to-day operations, you know? We have this upgrade, and it, it's federally mandated, or whatever mandated, and we have to pay these bills for it. We see them each month practically in here, you know? What am I going to say? No? You know? We've, it's already been approved, it's been budgeted for, and, and these things are already there. So I, I think that it's, just my own opinion, I think that it's important that the entire council weighs in on these big issues. There can happen that much. I think what this is designed for rarely happens, in fact, where there's an issue that has such community concern that it needs, that it strings out for several months. And in those cases, yeah, I think we, we need to discuss it and decide on it, and then that particular representative needs to represent the decision, the council, on those boards.
But if I'm reading this, it's, I guess, if, if a council member is going to give a personal opinion on something, they need to state that. Isn't that really what we're talking about?
That's what it says.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
It says it right here. You know, that personal opinion may represent the council, but maybe it doesn't. But I mean, and I go to what you just said, is it's rare. How often has this even happened, that this has been an issue? And that's why I wondered, do we need a policy for something that happens once? I mean, this is the first time I've really heard of the, this issue in the eight years I've been on council.
Well, it's a wonderful first meeting to jump into something that is already underway before I sat and see, but it is my understanding that this was requested by city council or members of city council. So I don't think the city's trying to go out of its way to create confusion or more work. I know personally, I'm going to rely on each of you to use your judgment as professionals to represent the city and to state such. I don't think this is going to really apply, as Mr. Dupree said, for routine business, but for things that, using your judgment, council should weigh in on, should understand, this is where this document provides some guidance and some clarity. Councilmember White.
Thank you. So I'd like to remind Councilmember Dupree that when the TMC was first introduced to the KMPO, that Councilmember Dupree seconded the motion for it to go forward. And yet he had no input from the council on that matter. So I just wanted to bring that forward. I believe that the people of Hayden value transparency, and having a plan is a good way to bring more transparency to the way the city is being run. But at first reading, this resolution seems to lean heavily towards power given to the mayor. We need to take a closer look at Idaho Code 5210, where I believe the power to decide on commissions and placement is more balanced. As an elected representative, my primary responsibility is to the will of the people, and I believe the wording of this resolution misses the mark in the area of powers and accountability. We have a representative government, and this resolution will take the will of the people out of the equation, and it seems to create a hierarchy. After all, who is the city? It's the people. I, for one, have felt frustrated and concerned over some of the boards we represent, because some of them are so clandestine. I just looked at the Jobs Plus and PAC websites, and I don't even see meeting dates or agendas or minutes. So I, for one, would embrace getting written reports from their representatives in the city council meetings as well as others. So good communication and transparency are key in representing our constituents. We also need to decide on how to address differences of opinion and how we can get input from the citizens before making decisions on policy. This resolution was given to us on Friday, so passing it today would be hasty. So in order to get us all on the same page, I'd like to propose that we have a workshop to work on the enhancement and to provide clarity. And I would like to postpone this decision to a later date and have a workshop first.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I seconded the motion, but let's be very clear about what it was. It was in the initial stages, and it was to visit a site in Spokane to see the feasibility of it. What is this? Not just a blanket, nope, not going to happen, not going to do it. It was to gather information, which I think is wise in the case of all that we do here. Okay? It's foolish to just say, nope, I don't like it, I'm not going to do it. We need to gather as much information on everything that we do before we make decisions. That's what the second was about, to move forward, to go visit. It wasn't a binding decision on anything. As far as representing the people, what better way to represent the people than to have the full council discuss issues? Okay? That's the way you represent the people when you have issues that are controversial or whatever, you discuss them. Each member here says their piece, says what they think, talks about the information they've gathered, maybe their interpretation of it or not, okay? The more discussion that we can all have, and that we can all participate, the better, okay? Rather than just saying, nope, I don't, nope, we don't even want to go down that road. That's our job, is to collect information and then try and make educated decisions based on the collection of information. And that's what I think, I agree, I think, I think, I don't have a problem postponing this, because maybe there needs to be a, a small amount of definition, fine defining of, of what instances, of maybe, if at all possible, do we need to bring this information back for discussion? What is day-to-day operations when you go to these meetings? I, I agree. I go to a lot of these meetings, and I'm sitting there going, what does this have to do with Hayden? Just being honest with you. And a lot of my thinking is, whatever level of participation, I think it's because we are either required to have a representative from each entity around, or we have a stake in it, the broad county operation or whatever it is, okay? And so we're there. But I'll be honest with you, in the two, two years I've been here now, the board meetings that I've gone to, a lot of times, it's just, it's exactly as Councilmember, Council President Roder, you get the agenda like you do here, you, you do your homework before going, you ask your questions, you do what you do, and then a lot of it is basically going through aye, nay, aye, nay, that type of thing. Some of these things is very little discussion, because it is day-to-day business, okay? So I, I would have no problem, I don't know that we need a workshop on this, to be honest with you, but I do think we might need some, maybe drill down a little bit on what instances do we need to come, what type of situations do we need to come to the council, get it on the agenda, and then have a discussion, where do we want to go on this?
Would the council consider perhaps going with this and then making adjustments? If we need to, through learning lessons, I just quickly read this as you all were talking. I'll be honest with you, again, as leaders of the city, there's special trust and confidence that I have and the voters have in you to represent the city on boards. I'm not sure that painting you guys into a corner and tying your hands with such exacting guidance is the way to go here. I think a more broad approach that relies on your matured judgment is something I encourage you to consider. Having said that, it is your decision.
Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
I've moved that we postpone this decision and have a workshop to discuss it before a vote at a later date. We need to have a workshop where we can come up with a plan to fit Hayden specifically. I'd like to discuss the list of boards and the merits of each one, and also, there's other things I would like to see added to it. And so I would think that a workshop is a good move to make.
Okay, so there is a motion for a workshop. Is there a second?
I will second that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, there's a second. I guess we need a roll call vote.
Councilmember Dupree.
Sure.
Councilmember Shaffer.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Council President Roder.
Yes. Discussion? If, where I'm struggling is, I don't like to create more bureaucracy with what seems to be common sense. And that's where I, that's where I really struggle with this. And I'm, 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 I, I think, I think every member of this council wants to do the right thing. Now, is that the right thing for what the city wants, but the people are the city? It seems to be a hard, it would seem to be a hard policy to administer, to determine, I mean, maybe there's some obvious, real obvious things that could come up, and maybe that could be handled in a less informal way. So, but I'm willing to work through this, and I think we need to talk about this, because I don't, I don't want to put us like the, our mayor said, in some kind of box, because now we have to have, you know, what policies do we, yeah, I'm just, I'm just struggling with some common sense and putting, putting, putting this into a hard policy. And so I agree that with the workshop, I just wanted to add that, so.
Okay, fair enough. Let's move on. I guess we'll discuss this more at a workshop. Our next item on the agenda is the city administrator report and calendar review.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have provided council a memo that I gave to you, I sent it by electronic mail today and then provided you a copy at your seat. I'd be happy to answer any questions. It's essentially a year-in-review look and gives you kind of an update about each department. And over the course of the last year, now, I was only here for one month of that year, so the, the report has leaned heavily on our staff. And I do find that there's some value added to look backwards to see where, where we've come over the course of the last 12 months and then as we look ahead as well. So, be happy to answer any questions, but that's all I had for the report.
Any questions for Lisa?
With suggestion, Mayor, if I may, I would like to see, if possible, we get a monthly report from the Sheriff's Department on all the different calls, and since we are, we have a new committee for public safety, I think that data would be very helpful for that committee to look at. I know we could ask the clerk, because I think Abby gets it, but if you could put it in here, I think it would be helpful for the whole council.
Sure, I'm still getting used to, yeah, all the reports that would be valuable to you, so I certainly don't mind adding that.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
And Mr. Roder, just for your broader vision, Lisa and I have an entire list of things of which that is an agenda item that we're going to go, or that we're going to use, use our commissions to groom, present to council, so we can have good transparency and good reporting from everyone, including but not limited to our law enforcement.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I was, I was wondering if we could hear from Alan Soderling about the progress of the sidewalk at the Hayden Meadows School. I heard he was at the school board meeting yesterday presenting that. If you could give us an update, please.
Alan, would you please?
Mayor and council, last night, we, I attended the meeting on behalf of the city for the sidewalk project that we got a grant for, that takes a sidewalk along the south side of Hayden Avenue from Maple to Fanucan Drive, and provides an area for the students at that elementary school to walk, the majority of the walking students travel along that path. The purpose of attending the meeting was to acquire a three-foot easement across the face of the school district property in order to enable us to put that eight-foot sidewalk across their property, there just wasn't quite enough right away in that location. It was strongly supported by the school board and, and they agreed to provide that, and we will be moving forward with, with acquiring the other easements that we need for construction, and hopefully be bidding that project out here shortly for construction in the summer.
Thank you.
I would also like to give a report from the last KMPO meeting that I attended. I just wanted to let you know that the local government transportation report came out, and Hayden did not get approved for a grant for the Ramsey Road and Honeysuckle Roundabout. And the reason stated is it's far from Highway 41.
Okay.
Okay, just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you.
And thank you. Just, I'd like to, and I know I bring this up every meeting, because it started back in August, the joint workshop, the city council, related to the future land use map and the comprehensive plan, where are we with that?
So, the Planning and Zoning Commission has no public hearings on their meeting on the 22nd, so if the city council can, if we can get a quorum of the city council to participate, we would offer that date as a possible for the joint workshop.
What is the 22nd?
Monday. Monday. Two weeks from yesterday.
That's a yes for me. I know you've been trying to do this since November.
August. Keep trying.
I mean, the joint meeting.
Okay. Yep, it's a yes for me.
And what's, what are we going to be looking at in this meeting?
That would be the joint meeting to, I believe, review the comprehensive plan, goals, policies, and vision statement as a precursor to then further enhancing, or at least discussing enhancing, the comprehensive plan to include but not be limited to the future land use map. This is kind of step one, if you will.
What was the date again?
Monday, the 22nd.
January 22nd.
Are you available?
I'm good there.
I followed Ms. Jovik's advice, and I did not bring my cell phone up here with me. I can't look at my calendar right now.
Hats off to you, sir. All right, so we can say tentative?
Tentative, yes.
All right, sounds like it's a winner.
Additionally, additionally, in relationship to the Public Safety Commission, again, need to clarify, because there's a lot of stuff going out there, the Public Safety Commission is not just to determine whether the city of Hayden is going to have our own police department. That is an aspect, and a key part of that is the word feasibility, okay? Means the Public Safety Commission is going to look at the feasibility defined as capable of being done, possibility, practicality of success, reasonableness of doing it, okay? I'm hearing people, people already, that Hayden is looking at going to their own police department. No, we're looking at the feasibility of it, which again, I think is wise. In the last couple of council meetings we've had, I forget which one it was, because we haven't had one in a month or so, it seems like, the county made it obvious, they want a five-year plan from us, specifically, how are we going to pay for the increases in law enforcement? Because it's coming, and they're telling us, it's coming. My concern is that some point in time down the road, that the increases from the sheriff are going to bring it relatively close to what it may cost us to have our own, may, don't know, probably won't, and probably keep it just at that level, okay? But who knows? Look at it. Look at the cost, have people who have experience with it, okay? Evaluate it. Because if we don't, okay, if we just say, whatever, no people, we're going to be coming back to you again, as we did last year, for more money. Because they're telling us, we're going to want more money, okay? Any way we look at it, okay? Do we want to raise taxes again? Because if we don't, they're going to reduce service, is about the only way that works. If you're not going to pay us, then you're most likely not going to get this level of service. So the people are going to have to make this decision continually, until we find a way to resolve this, okay?
Roundtable.
We, we have the lowest levy rate by far of any city around, okay? And my reality is that if, things that a lot of people say they want, okay? Where are we going to get the money from? Okay? There's some sources out there, a lot of people don't like them, oh, we don't, those people are bad. Okay, show me where we're going to get the money. we don't... Those people are bad." Okay, show me where we're going to get the money, okay? That type of thing. Don't want to raise taxes? Show me where we're going to get the money. Are we going to cut parks and wreck and roads and plowing? Where are we going to get the money? And that's the big question. So this is a deter... this is a situation that we need to discuss in depth and make a plan for, because it's coming.
Thank you. And just for clarity to the public, Councilmember Dupree is bringing up issues that are way down the road. We have just established the commission. We have not tasked them specifically with anything yet, to the best of my knowledge. A police force may or may not be on the list down the road, but there's no active work right now. So just for clarity...
That's my point.
Right, but I don't want to...
It's going to be a multifaceted...
Yeah. I didn't want... I don't want to kick something off like folks think it's actively being worked. It's not yet. Again, the council is just... or I'm sorry, the commission has just been approved. Do we have any other roundtable discussion items?
I have a few, Mayor, if I may. Number one, I want to thank the street crew for the incredible job they did with this last snowfall. I was up at 6:00 in the morning, and Wade, who runs our street department, was running the grader, and then behind there was a front-end loader with a gate. And I had no burn, and they did a... to manage those gates on that front-end loader, the guy that did it, I didn't recognize it because it was dark, the agility he had to control that thing was like, wow. They did a really, really good job. That's why I want to say thank you, street crew. And then you go to Coeur d'Alene that day, and they... that later in the morning, they didn't hardly start plowing, and we had her done. We do a great amount of work, a great job with a small levy rate, because we have efficient people that know how to... how to work and how to get the job done. So I just really appreciate what they're doing.
And for what it's worth to the public, when it snows, even the boss climbs in the gear. There is not a single person in streets or parks that doesn't roll up their sleeves and work for you.
So I have a couple other things that I made to continue. I want to say that we have, as our new mayor, somebody that has eight years on P&amp;Z?
Close.
And he was the chairman. So he's going to bring insight, which I think is incredibly valuable, as we move forward to do a joint workshop with P&amp;Z and the city council on how we can tweak the 2040 comp plan. And so I really appreciate his insight that he'll be bringing, because I think, you know, add leadership into how we can move forward. The other thing I just want to briefly mention is I know that we didn't get the grant for Ramsey and Honeysuckle Roundabout. About four years ago, we applied for it. We didn't get it then. And as you know, that's not within the urban renewal district. So we have literally millions of dollars of right-of-way that we have to acquire to fix these intersections. And it's tough, because we got to figure out how to fix them, and we don't have the money to fix all these. I just wanted to bring that. So that's all I had, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone have anything else? Okay, I'm hearing not. Our city council now is going to move into executive session, and that's basically a private meeting amongst council. The two reasons are following Idaho Code 74-2061C to acquire an interest in real property which is not owned by a public agency, and Idaho Code 74-2061F to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss the legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated but eminently likely to be litigated. Before we go into executive session, I am asking city council if they will allow our previous mayor, Forcell, to attend the executive session, as he has been working these projects actively and is going to be the biggest brain in the room on this stuff. Any objection to that?
No.
I'm hearing none.
The motion...
So I'll make the motion that we go into executive session based on Idaho Code 74-2061C and 74-2061F.
Second. We have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Dupree?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
So moved. All right, I got a rookie question. Do we go into this room, or do we ask folks to...
Just give a five-minute break for the room to...
All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight.